Welcome to this meeting of Westminster Mayor and Common Council. The council meets here in City Hall on the second and fourth Mondays of every week. Please note that the council meetings, although open to the public, here in City Hall, are also available and streamed live on the city's YouTube page, as well as the Community Media Center channel at West. Now it begins to do every meeting with the pledge of the flag, followed by a moment.
But to read these two, the United States of America. To the Republic, for its fans, one nation under God, given its law with clarity and justice.
Thank you. As a courtesy to everyone, please take a moment to silence your cell phones or any other electronic devices you have in place. Poppy, tonight's agenda and the entire information packet the council will be using are available online and on the city's website. And top of the agenda, available here in the front of the room for those who are. Before we do anything else, I just want to take a moment to offer the council's condolences. A statement for the record about a closed meeting, made a closed meeting Wednesday, March 6th, 2024, in accordance with the general provisions article, section three dash three zero six C two, the Amated Code of Maryland. And without objection, it is noted that the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect that the common council met in a closed meeting on Wednesday, March 6th, 2024, 4:33 PM pursuant to general provisions article, section three dash three zero five B one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, physical devotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of the employees, oh, sorry, appointees, employees, or other officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, and any other personal matter that affects one or more specific. Motion was made by Mr. Kavachi, seconded by Ms. Gilbert. The vote to close the meeting was unanimous. There were no staff members in attendance, the common council, no official action during the meeting, and the closed session had turned at 5:19 PM. Thank you. We have pretty many appointments, uh, the appointments by the mayor this evening. We will take them serially, so because there are different boards and different terms. So let's just do them all separately. Uh, the first is Kristen Smith, to be appointed to the Board of Elections. May I have a motion?
I'll move, Mr. President.
A motion to, uh, confirm the mayor's appointment, please say aye.
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Gilbert, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Mr. Jay Voight, appointed to be a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. May I have a motion?
I think a motion.
Motion by Mr. Dayhoff, second by Mr. Hoff. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay, the eyes seem to have, the eyes have it. And finally, Captain Beatty, appointed to the Historic District Commission. Motion, motion by Mr. Dayhoff, is there a second?
Second.
The second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay, the eyes seem to have, the eyes have it. And one is all approved. Mayor, would you like to introduce your appointee who is here?
Sure, out of the three, um, Kristen, Kristen Smith recently just returned from the Carolinas this morning, and so she was unable to make it today, but I think she'll be a fine addition to the Board of Elections. I know, um, I was able to speak to her some length. I know Councilmember Kabachi, uh, also known for her as well. Mr. Jay Voight, who we all know up here, there was a resounding yes for his, um, recommendation or his, um, appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So thank you very much for your willingness to serve uh, on that commission. And then Catherine Beatty, appointed to the Historic District Commission. Uh, she's been working with the Historic District for some time, uh, known in town and comes with quite a rich background of history. So she'll be a fantastic appointment to that commission as well. And so thank you to the council for approving my three committee appointments.
Thank you, Dr. Becker, I appreciate your answer.
I thought you were, but.
But it was a, they were all signed up.
They were, thank you.
Mr. Voight, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for your service, we appreciate it.
Now the hard work begins, right? Welcome aboard.
I'm in retirement, I don't work for.
This is gonna be fun, these are delicious. Um, we have, um, three items under approval of minutes. Uh, we have the meeting of the mayor and council on February 26th. We have a special meeting of the mayor and council on March 6th, and a closed session of the same date. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
And a motion by Mr. Dayhoff, is there a second?
Second.
The second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say nay, the eyes seem to have, the eyes have it. And the minutes are approved, thank you. Next item is the consent counter. We have two items on the consent counter this evening. We have a motion for quick.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, motion by Mr. Dayhoff, is there a second?
Second.
The second by Ms. Gilbert, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The opposed say nay, the eyes seem to have, the eyes have it. Consent counters approved, thank you all for that. Report from the mayor, Dr. Becker.
Right, thank you, Council President. Um, I'll keep it on the short side this evening. Uh, we're getting busy again, I'm sure. Uh, we'll all talk about the Celtic Canter a little bit as we go through our uh, council comments and discussion a little bit later today as well. But on Friday, March 1st, um, I had a great time taking part in the Read Across America Day uh, with Dr. Seuss, it's a little friends and grace. Um, to the four-year-olds, which was a new age group for me, but also one that was, uh, a lot of fun. My favorite book, Red Fish, Blue Fish, uh, One Fish, Two Fish, Red Fish, One Fish. Yeah, that's a, it's a cool book, so, um, that was a lot of fun. Um, it was pretty quiet that next week, uh, Friday, March 8th, the Rudolph Girls, um, opened their new location at 19 Liberty Street, and I know, uh, I was joined there by several council members uh, as well. And, um, then on Saturday, March 9th, in the rain, but not the snow, uh, we all celebrated the Irish Festival, the Celtic Canter. Um, I can't wait to hear the report about it, uh, from Mrs. Gruber. Um, and just the number of people who showed up in the rain uh, to run a 5K and to visit vendors on Main Street was astounding to me. And I think Ms. Gruber said there were 75 that registered the day of, and I don't understand that mindset when you're on a day where it's pouring and you say to yourself, I'm gonna go run a 5K today, um, because that's not me. Um, but, uh, it was great, thank you so much, Mrs. Gruber, for everything that you do for the, for the council, um, and, uh, the chief with the police department, um, all the streets department, everyone now. And we often say, every department plays a role in the events that we do in town. And on top of that, all the volunteers that were there in the pouring rain, uh, were also so dedicated to what the city does for that. So thank you very much, Mrs. Gruber. Um, and that's all I'm gonna say.
Alright, very good.
Because I just got back from Annapolis.
Well, I'll say thank you, Mayor, for going to Annapolis to, uh, to, you know.
Offer my services.
Yes, well, already have, thank you very much, we appreciate it. We want now to report to our standing committees. As we do usually with our liaison to the Carroll County Arts Council, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, lots of good programming at the, um, Arts Council. Um, attendance is up, is up precipitously. Um, and I guess that's a reflection of post-COVID and excellent programming. Uh, check the website for more details, and we'll come out to the Arts Council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Economic and Community Development Committee, Mr. Hoff.
Um, we're, we're gonna be having a meeting later this week, but other than that, nothing to report.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Hoff. Um, many thanks to, on behalf of the Finance Committee, let me say thanks to our city administrator and director of finance, who've been working hard on preparing budget. Uh, pleased to note that you all, I've distributed to you, uh, the upcoming dates uh, that are important for the budget. On May 10th, we estimate right around May 10th, the budget book should be distributed to you. Uh, on May 13th, we expect to introduce the budget ordinance at the council meeting that day. We've also at that time have the constant yield public hearing. On May 16th, we'll have a budget work session for the council. And, um, on May 20th, we will have a second budget work session if necessary. Uh, and on May 28th, uh, this will be a council meeting on Tuesday, because we don't have one, because we just want to take it before Memorial Day. Um, and at that time, we plan to adopt the budget, so we will have a budget for the end of the day. Which is, yeah, a little bit later than we try to do it, but, uh, it's not an election year, so we don't think we'll get it done before. So please make a note of those dates, they were all sent out to you, but, you know, before, uh, you know, going through the budget with everybody and having some good conversations.
I appreciate those dates coming out early like that, too, it's nice.
Yes, yeah, appreciate it, Ms. Imhalsen, these are our just, yeah, helping us get that back. Um, Personnel Committee, I have nothing to report on behalf of the Personnel Committee. Public Safety, Mr. Kabachi.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, on the 27th of February, Westminster Police Department staff provided outreach support at the St. John's Cathedral Church, uh, priest on the rooftop event. Um, on March 1st, the Maryland certified, a Maryland certified police officer, Jeffrey Frabry, was sworn in as a new Westminster Police Officer, I think you did that, right, Councilman Dayhoff?
Yes, sir.
Um, uh, he will complete his field training, uh, before he is assigned to a patrol squad on March 3rd, I'm sorry, March 4th. Uh, Chief Ledwell attended the quarterly police accountability meeting. And then one other thing I wanted to note, um, we received a nice letter, um, of appreciation from the chief of the 20th Police Department, um, commending, was 20th, right? Hampstead, I'm sorry, I apologize, Hampstead, I didn't write that down here, of course. Um, commending Lieutenant Donovan and Corporal De Angelis for some assistance they provided. De Angelis is a K-9 officer, and they needed some help on a stop uh, where they suspected drug activity. In fact, they went out, the, the K-9 alerted, and they were able to arrest a couple of individuals, um, for, uh, drug-related, well, drug-related charges. And, uh, that, that would not have happened had, had they not been able to go out there and give that assistance to their department. And their chief was very appreciative of that, so that's wonderful, chief, you know, spirit cooperation between municipalities. And I know that you work closely with, obviously, the sheriff and you, you know, uh, being the chief law enforcement folks in the county, but it's nice that we can help the other municipalities like this as well, that don't have all the resources that we do, so. Commend you and Donovan and De Angelis for that, so please pass that on to all of us, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Kabachi. Of course, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, yes, um, the Streets Department has been filling multiple potholes on Main Street for the upcoming well, which is now the past Celtic Canter. They also assisted the Recreation Parks Department in hosting the Celtic Canter. Streets Department also reconstructed the snack shack at the community pool. I'm looking forward to the new, um, grand opening coming up very shortly. And the Utilities Maintenance Division ended up replacing 11 feet of sewer pipe last night on George Street near Liberty Street. Um, and the team was out to 4:00 AM doing that, um, replacement. That's all I have on public works.
Alright, very good, thank you. Um, would you like to do Recreation Parks as well?
Actually, would. Um, so, uh, a successful Celtic Canter again is in the books. Um, and pub crawl was held on Saturday, March 9th, a record number of runners registered this year. Over 1,200 people participated in one or more of the running events. Not to mention hundreds more who came out to, um, spectate and enjoy the Irish Festival, Downtown Scavenger Hunt, the Westminster, the Pub Crawl, and the Westminster Strongest Kid Competition. The department's adaptive recreation program is gaining momentum. The karaoke party scheduled for March 22nd is filled with a waiting list to accommodate additional registrants. The program was moved from the community room at the pool to the multipurpose room at the city's administrative office building. Um, don't forget to join us for the city's annual Egg Hunt and Egg Siding Bunny Trail at Wakefield Valley Park on Saturday, March 23rd. Join us for our fun Easter-themed trail at Wakefield Valley Park, featuring children's activities, crafts, traditional egg hunt, obviously a visit from the Easter Bunny, um, all for ages one to four at 1:30, and for ages five to eight, it will be at 2:30. The egg hunt features over 20,000 treat-filled eggs, some of which contain a special prize ticket that can be redeemed for a surprise. Each age group will have one golden egg ticket hidden among the eggs and other prize eggs. Don't forget to bring your basket to collect all eggs. The Four-Age Rabbit and Cappy Club will also attend with their bunny betting zoo. And on top of all that, it is free. That is all I have.
Alright, very good, thank you. Uh, finally, Technology, Mr. Dayhoff.
Your report.
Thanks very much. Uh, next item on the agenda is the council comments and discussion. This is the time on the agenda where council members get to share their concerns or thoughts uh, on items that are not elsewhere on the agenda. Mr. Kabachi.
Thanks, Mr. President, I won't belabor, because I'm sure everybody's gonna talk about it, wonderful event on Saturday. Um, a lot of fun, even though it poured down rain. I, I know I was in some of the bars and restaurants after the event, and they were chock full of people, so wonderful job to all the staff that managed that, which I know is more than just Ms. Gruber's department, of course, she's part of the lead, so thank you very much. It's all I have, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Kabachi. Uh, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I also really enjoyed the, um, the Celtic Canter, and, um, I really appreciated the fact that, uh, by sponsoring the event, um, we, um, the bars and the restaurants, um, all throughout town, the stores were just packed. And that's good stuff, that's what it's all about. That'll be my report, Mr. President, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Ms. Gilbert.
Um, everybody's pretty much said everything except for the, um, the fact that I actually ran in the 5K. So, um, I ended up being drenched, wet, cold, and very thankful for a warm fireplace when I returned home and quickly changed clothes to go out, and then pub crawl it and eat lunch and sharing the festivities later.
But you had registered for the 5K prior to that day.
Yes, I did, way prior. And I was even thinking about not running when I saw the rain, but then we both, the person I ran with looked out the window and said, ah, it's drizzle, we can handle it. Little did we know, it was, that floor get colder and the wind blow. But hey, I did it, I'm okay, I'm good to go. Energized and ready for the next one. No, that's all.
Everybody's already covered the Celtic Canter, but it, I just am always so impressed with what a great job the city does with our events. And what, what it does for our downtown and our businesses. Uh, because I think sometimes people maybe underappreciate the fact, it's not just a party for people to have a good time. It brings people to this city, which is really important. I know just anecdotally, for myself, you know, for a lot of the strolls, it used to be I would get, you know, one table, and now I'm up to three tables, because different friends have come and they wanna come back, because they always have a great time whenever they come. And, and some of these people are from Baltimore and DC, and they would have never, besides coming to see me, they would have never come to let me in here. And they always have a lot of compliments to say, oh, this, this place is really nice, oh, I see why you like it here. So it, it's just a great way to kind of show off our, our city, and, uh, it, it works on so many different levels, uh, so tremendous job, uh, by staff. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention and remind everybody about, uh, the Maryland Municipal League, um, over the past year has been doing, trying to do county days, their Carroll County Day is actually, uh, this Thursday, which ends in the chapter dinner, which is gonna be here in Westminster. Um, so I, I think, uh, I'm sure at some point, you know, people will be reaching out, because I think they're gonna be coming, uh, to Westminster a little bit before the chapter dinner as well, um, to, you know, meet some of us and all of that, so. Um, and the Maryland Municipal League really does a good job of, of, and they have a lot of new energy behind them. I, I've served on their legislative committee, we're trying to look out for the best interest of municipalities throughout the state. Um, so it's nice that they're coming out to Carroll County. Uh, I think they're gonna be visiting Windsor, Manchester, Hampstead, and, and Austin, because obviously they can't fit all the cities in in one day, so. That's it.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Hoff. Um, I, I don't believe it, I want to say something about the Celtic Canter and the whole day that's a little different. First of all, is the, first of all, on all of these events, they never get stale, because there's always something new. Ms. Gruber and the rest of the staff always add something new, so you don't just say, well, it's gonna be just like last year. It's never just like last year. And I'm not just talking about the weather, so. So, so, I, that's, I, I, I think that's true. I also wanna say, I'm proud that all of my colleagues once again showed up for the arduous 0.5K race. Um, you know, we've done it in the snow, we've done it in the rain, we've done it in sunshine, and we keep going. Nothing can stop, you know, the mayor and council from participating in this, this, this really difficult call, they're both Spanish. So thank you for that. And finally, I just want to give props to Ms. Gilbert, who'd be the only ones who did that, but we'll do all right, so congratulations on that. Thank you. Alright, we move on now to, um, next item bids. We have one bid, approval of a bid for a replacement truck. 2023 Ford pickup truck, F-150 extended cab, from Apple Ford of Columbia, Maryland, in total amount $40,000, Ms. Imhalsen.
Thank you, sir. The city's adopted fiscal year '24 capital budget, allocates funding for the replacement of trucks and equipment, as you know. This proposed purchase is for a replacement pickup truck. Requested utility vehicle is available via an existing contract with Baltimore County and Apple Ford, located at 8,800 Stanford Boulevard, Columbia, Maryland. Westminster's procurement code allows the city to piggyback on this competitively awarded contract. The vehicle being purchased is a Ford F-150, 2023 Ford pickup truck, F-150 extended cab. Further information is provided in the attached quote with specification sheets. Cost of the unit is $40,000, inclusive of all selected options. The fiscal year '24 budget for this project is $40,000. The truck actually cost a little bit more than 40,000, we were able to negotiate down, because all we have is 40,000 in budget. Staff recommends, no shenanigans, staff recommends that the mayor, um, the council authorize sole source purchase of a replacement truck, 2023 Ford pickup truck, F-150 extended cab, from Apple Ford of Maryland, Columbia, Maryland, in the total amount of $40,000.
Thank you, Ms. Imhalsen, just for note, we really are one Maryland. We've got a municipality in Carroll County, is a former county contract to buy a truck from Howard County. You can't say, you can't say we don't, uh, we're not team players here. Um, we have a motion to approve the bid.
I'll move to approve.
A motion by Mr. Kabachi, is there a second?
I'll second.
The second by Mr. Hoff, any discussion, any questions, Ms. Imhalsen? Hearing none, we'll move on to a question. All those in favor of approving the bid, please say aye.
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 The opposed say nay, the eyes seem to have, the eyes have it, it is approved. Next item is, um, adoption of Resolution 24 dash zero four, the resolution of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster, adopting the 2022 Carroll County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And that, we'll turn to Mr. Deepo.
Thank you, and good evening. The FEMA, a FEMA-approved hazard mitigation plan is an eligibility requirement for several federal grants. Um, the Carroll County Hazard Mitigation Plan has been developed by Carroll County Department of Public Safety Emergency Management Staff in cooperation with other county agencies and municipalities. In order for the city of Westminster to be eligible to apply for and receive such grants, it is necessary that the Mayor and Common Council adopt by resolution the plan and submit documentation of such approval to FEMA. And with that, staff recommends that the Mayor and Common Council introduce an approved Resolution Number 2404, adopting the 2022 Carroll County Hazard Mitigation Plan, and available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Deepo, we have a motion to approve, I'm sorry, we have a motion to adopt Resolution 24 dash zero four.
Motion to adopt.
A motion by Mr. Dayhoff, is there a second? The second by Mr. Kabachi. Any discussion or any questions for Mr. Deepo? I could copy it, you know, pack it. Um, alright, hearing no discussion, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay, the eyes seem to have, the eyes have it, and the resolution is adopted, thank you. Uh, next item is unfinished business, there's no unfinished business of which I'm aware. Does anybody have any unfinished business? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. We have one item of new business, approval of a sole-source contract with Ramjack Chesapeake for remediation of the chemical building in the amount not to exceed $120,000. Ms. Imhalsen.
The chemical building is in need of remediation, because it was damaged during the ENR upgrade project. GHD, who's our owner representative and engineer, researched remediation methods and contacted two potential contractors. Of the two contractors, only Ramjack Chesapeake responded, due to the nature of the work. This type of work is highly specialized. The work involves lifting the structure, the building, back into place and grouting beneath the structure to secure from further movement. Additionally, times of the essence for this work. HRI, the general contractor, will be laying final pavement in the spring. We can get this work done now, if that happens, it will save us additional, um, pavement patching, cutting of. Funding for this project will require a budget amendment. Funds are anticipated to be allocated from sewer reserves. And that recommends that the Mayor and Common Council approve a sole-source contract with Ramjack Chesapeake for remediation of the chemical building not to exceed $120,000.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Imhalsen. Our motion to approve the sole-source contract.
Motion to approve.
The motion by Mr. Dayhoff, may I have a second?
Do the second.
The second by Mr. Hoff, any discussion? Hearing none, we move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The opposed say nay, the eyes seem to have, the eyes have it, and contract is approved. Thank you. Alright, Department of Reports, Ms. Imhalsen, would you like to lead us through those?
Absolutely, we could say or go, it's up to you. Um, we're gonna start with the Recreation and Parks Department. As Ms., uh, as Councilmember Gilbert indicated, uh, in two weeks, we've got the Easter Egg Hunt upcoming. Um, those eggs are filled by the elves at the Recreation and Parks Department, who are a bit busy filling, I don't know, some 40,000, 60,000, billion eggs. So we will start with Ms. Gruber.
Good evening, thank you to all of you for persevering through that arduous 0.5K. I'm sure you're still in recovery mode. Um, it's always amazing to see all of you out in support of this event. Um, I also want to thank all of the staff and volunteers involved for their resiliency, um, during which, some challenging weather, we'll just say it, uh, that way. So, um, I'm not sure if, uh, city clerk farmer is dried out yet.
I do, I hear.
So it truly is a team effort, um, streets, police, and, and other city employees, a volunteer to help us out on these days, so. Um, it was, it was great to see all the camaraderie, not only with staff and council, but also the runners that turned out. Just some statistics for you, um, the fastest time for the course was 17 minutes and 36 seconds. Um,
That's fast.
And we have runners from North Carolina, New York, West Virginia, Pennsylvania, Virginia, DC, and of course, Maryland. So seven states represented on our humble little main street on Saturday is pretty great, so. Um, thank you again for your continued support, and one of these years, we're gonna have great weather, I just know it. Speaking of great weather, um, hopefully, our wine stroll scheduled for April 20th, um, we'll see some better weather than the Celtic Canter did, that is our next downtown event. And as Ms. Imhalsen and Councilmember Gilbert mentioned, our most upcoming event is our Egg Hunt and Easter Trail at Wakefield Valley Park. So we hope to see everybody out at those upcoming events. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the Recreation and Parks Director?
Just, uh, a question I just want to mention, since we're talking about Wakefield, um, that the cover of the Carroll County Tourism, uh, magazine, uh, featured the Silver Tree Sculpture, and I understand the photograph, oh, sorry, Raven Tree, thank you, Raven Tree. And I understand the photograph was taken by Mr. Dayhoff.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. That's very exciting. I want to thank the Recreation and Parks staff for a tremendous effort, and also the public works staff. Uh, there's a lot of staff, and you all know this as well, but some of them are listening tonight, and I want to just thank them. There's a lot of staff involved in putting on these events, and as everyone's noted, and the police department, frankly. Um, the weather was just awful. They were out there for all of it, start to finish. Um, they saw about three different seasons that morning. And some of them saw multiple layers of clothes as well, so. Uh, thank, I want to really thank the staff for that. Everyone was in good spirits, they were miserable and happy at the same time. And, um, I don't know that that should be our tagline, but I really appreciate it.
Next year's Celtic Canter tagline.
Next year's Celtic Cantor tagline on the, on the t-shirt, there it is.
Those are the department head t-shirts, miserable and happy. Just kidding, just kidding. Alright, we're gonna move on to the IT Department, um, and our chief problem solver, Mr. Um, I, I was calling you Mr. Brown. I was ready to move on to him then.
I'll keep it short. Thank you, Ms. Imhals. Uh, normal behind the scenes stuff for us going on. We've been working hard on getting budget and working on other departments and their budgets, trying to. Move everything around to get everything we need. So I've been focused on that right now, the last couple of weeks. Happy new year.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are there any questions for the IT Director?
I'd like to thank Mr. Brown for unlocking my computer during the meeting.
Mr. Moore?
I'd like to thank Mr. Moore for unlocking my computer for me during the meeting, when I locked myself out. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I just wanna acknowledge we've got with us today the Superintendent of our Water Reclamation Facility, Mr. Vance Summerhill. Mr. Summerhill, thanks for joining us. Um, alright, we will move on to the Housing Department, the actual Mr. Brown. Are there any questions for the Housing Department? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Planning Department. Mr. Depot.
Seriously, anyone? Okay. For March sixth, the Historic District Commission discusses implementation plan and preparations for the nation's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. The H C also approved the creation of a nation's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary subcommittee. Allowing members of the community to take part of the planning for the event. On March twenty-first, the Planning and Zoning Commission is tend to, tentatively scheduled to review a sign permit application for the Honey Grove Restaurant. There are requests and a sign larger than we can approve administratively. They're gonna hold a public hearing on local map amendment L M A twenty-three oh two, amending the zoning map to rezone parcels F one B. It's that property north of eight forty-two Littlestown Pike. Um, it's currently in use as the, um. All About You Salon and Barber Shop. It's future potential location of a Dunkin', uh, of a Dunkin' Donuts. Hold a public hearing on ordinance number twenty-four oh two for the M U I B, C C, B D and C B use. Text Amendment, better known as the Bookstore Text Amendment. As you recall, we added several other uses other than just bookstore. To try to address some of the inconsistencies we have in the zoning ordinance. They will be reviewing an amendment to the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan to include two properties located. Uh, to the south of and adjacent to the Stonegate Residential Development. These were known as the dull properties. You may recall they were removed from the water and sewer service area. Uh, somebody has just purchased them. And they are looking to develop them as single-family detached, um, development, residential development, so they are asking to be placed back in the water and sewer service area. Following that would be annexation, because they are located in the county. Uh, the planning commission is to hear a presentation from the Carroll County Planning Department regarding the Carroll County Economic Development and Land Use Study. The study officially kicked off the first leg of the county's master plan or comprehensive plan update. So that's just an update, planning commission requested a, a, um, presentation. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the Planning Department? Hearing none, we will move on to the Finance Department.
Thank you, Ms. Imhals. Good evening. I, I just wanted to thank all of the staff that are in the room and many others that are not with us tonight. For their participation and thoughtful preparedness, um, and helping us with the budget that we look forward to presenting in a few weeks or. Or a little bit more, but in the near future. So I just wanna thank everybody for their hard work on that. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the Finance Department? Hearing none, we are gonna move on to the Police Department, where I have, uh, a little announcement to make. Um, Leadership Carroll, it's, I think some, everyone knows what Leadership Carroll is, but it's, um, a program that's run annually by. The Chamber of Commerce and Chief Ledwell is in charge of Law Enforcement Day. Which includes the law enforcement agencies in Carroll County, um, the large agencies, so Westminster and the county and the State's Attorney's Office. It's kind of a big process, um, and they run through presentations, classes, tour of the jail. Et cetera, et cetera. Um, it takes a bit of planning and the chief's in charge of that entire thing. I went through Leadership Carroll last year, so I had an opportunity to see it for myself. We always have about two staff members that go every single year. Um, the chief does a great job every year. This year we got some extra kudos, or he did rather. Um, so we've heard from Heather Dewise with the Clerk of the Circuit Court, um, Janet Lad with the Carroll Community College. Tim Wood, with the State's Attorney's Office, all who sent out special thank yous, um, indicating that the chief went above and beyond, as he always does. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to make sure that you all are aware that we received those thank yous from those entities. Um, and to make sure that we've given the chief the kudos that he's deserved, because there was a lot of hard work put into that. There are a lot of moving pieces, a lot of agencies who are all busy with their day-to-day jobs as well. So chief, thank you for your job. Well done.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And of course, he was there very early on Saturday, a rainy Saturday morning, um, and also helping make sure that my staff didn't. Shiver to death over there. Um, so thanks again, chief. And we will start with your report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, just one thing, um, Captain Jeff Schuster is in week two. Uh, a ten-week, uh, course at the Northwestern School of Police Staff in Command. Um, which is one of the big two pillar schools. You gotta go to the FBI National Academy or Northwest, Western. Um, so, um, it's an intensive leadership and management education, um, program. Uh, he is commuting every day. It's in Largo. Um, now, Captain Schuster, he's probably there at five AM sitting in the parking lot. Um, and he was back helping us with, uh, the Celtic Cantor on Saturday, so, um, I know he'll do well there. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for him.
Are there any questions for the chief? Mr. President, that concludes the departmental reports.
Very good. So thank you, Ms. Imhals. Uh, that, uh. Right, we move to the agenda. My final item is citizen comments. And this is where we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues presented tonight's agenda or any other city issues. For citizens who are not attending the public meeting, we invite you to send us your comments and concerns via email at comments@westminstermd.gov. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. Commenters should include their aggressive phone number with their comments. We now invite comments from anyone who is present, uh, who sees. Maybe they like to be heard. If so, please give us your name and address from there. Right? No wish to be heard. And now we'll conclude our agenda and end the meeting. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, March twenty-fifth. And with that, without objection, we are adjourned.